Thank you, and welcome again to the Mesa City Council Meeting for November the 21st of 2022. I will note for the record that all of our council are present. We will begin this meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Mert Peckrell of the Mesa Bible Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
First Timothy, Chapter 2, Verse 1 and 2. "First of all, then, brethren, I urge that entreaties, prayers, petitions, and thanksgivings be made on behalf of all men, for kings and all who are in authority, in order that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity." May God add the blessing to the reading of his word. Heavenly Father, thank you for the body known as the City Council of Mesa. Thank you for each person. Thank you for their families. Thank you for their dedication. Thank you for their leadership and example. Father, thank you for a community that you have blessed us with that's responsive to the needs of the people. Father, for these here tonight who have concerns, have problems, have petitions, requests, we pray, Father, that you would give wisdom and guidance and direction. That, Father, we invoke your blessing now upon this time, this gathering. We pray that we would know your presence with us in the power of the Spirit of God. We pray, Father, that we would understand the wisdom of God that you have given to us in the Word of God. Blessed, now we pray in Jesus' name these deliberations before you. In thank you. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Thank you for setting a good tone for this meeting. I think we might need it. The first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. We invite Mr. Christopher forward to read the Consent Agenda. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Christopher. Please. Thank you very much, Ms. Spillsbury. I was anxious to get to the meat of the matter here. But I'm very excited today that we do have a proclamation to proclaim Be Kind America Month. And this is a wonderful initiative that Councilmember Spillsbury has spearheaded, so I'm going to turn the time over to her to talk about it.
Yeah, we are so excited. This month is Be Kind America Month. And so in the city of Mesa, we are going to make a proclamation that November is Kindness Month. I am a big believer in kindness. I started a hashtag Mesa Kindness Campaign, and I want to thank all the citizens and city departments and different organizations that have rallied behind this hashtag and added it to social media posts when they see and witness acts of kindness or participate in acts of kindness, because I truly believe that acts of kindness change the world. It has so much power in it, and we need it more than ever right now. One of my favorite quotes by Leo Tolstoy is that "Nothing changes our lives or the lives of other people than perpetual kindness." It makes it more beautiful. I did not quote that well. But I want to invite Allison Brooks with the Mesa Regional Foundation and J.C. Thompson with the Be Kind People Project up to share a few words with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember, for allowing me to say a few words this evening. Earlier this year, I reconnected with J.C. Thompson of the Be Kind People Project and was thrilled that he brought up the idea of Mesa becoming the first-ever Be Kind Certified City. And when I brought up that idea to Mayor John Giles, he was kind enough to put me in touch with Councilmember Spillsbury, so thank you. Although it'll be great for us to become the first Be Kind City, as you know, we love to be the first of anything and the leader of almost everything and everything here in Mesa. I got to thinking about what that really means, and that's two things. First, it'll show the world what a truly inclusive city that we are. It's another way that we can demonstrate to our community our shared values of kindness, compassion, and caring. And second, kindness can make a huge impact, and whether that's two kids on the playground that connect together because they sat on a bench one day and they became lifelong friends, or it's taking the time to just truly check in with somebody who you've noticed over the past few weeks their demeanor has changed and asking if they're okay, and then it opens up some discussion on perhaps their mental wellness. Sometimes it's just putting yourself in another's shoes when they have a different point of view, you know, like around my Thanksgiving table this weekend. And maybe it's just simply starting that email or that text with, "Hi, how are you? I hope you had a good weekend, and then here's my 50 other thoughts that I need to let you know about." You see, the thing is, is that kindness can quite possibly make someone's day better, and it could change the trajectory of their life. And to me, that's worth investing as much as we possibly can in becoming the most kind city as possible. We at Mesa Regional Foundation for Accessibility, Diversity, and Inclusion are proud to support this effort by Councilmember Spillsbury and look forward to becoming the first Be Kind City, making Mesa a better place to visit, live, work, and play. Thank you.
And I just want to...
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to quickly acknowledge the councilmember for leading this kindness initiative, and we've been watching. We're here in the Valley. We're a 501(c)(3). We've been delivering programs here in Arizona for the last 10 years in Mesa schools and actually schools across the valley, over 300 schools. Our initiative for World Kindness Month was to get a Be Kind Pledge poster into every classroom in the Valley. We've already given out 1,700 just in the last two weeks. And we're really proud to be working with the city of Mesa on its journey to become a Be Kind City. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have a proclamation, so council, why don't you join us down at the podium, and we'll invite the folks from the organizations to come up for a photograph of that proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay, thank you, thank you.
I think this belongs to...
I have built some selfies today.
All right. I apologize for almost skipping over that. That's probably going to be the highlight of our meeting today, so thank you. We will invite then Mr. Christopher to read the Consent Agenda. Thank you, Mr. Christopher.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a councilmember or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval minutes of previous meetings is written. Item 3A, Act on Liquor License Application for the Love Pub Foundation, 10-day event from December 14th through December 23rd, 4011 South Power Road. Item 3B, Act on Liquor License Application for the American Patriots Riders Club, one-day event, December 10th, 922 South Country Club Drive. Item 3C, Act on Liquor License Application for Kentucky Bluegrass Bourbon and Spirits, 100 West Hoover Avenue. Item 3D, Act on Liquor License Application for Longbow Golf Club, 5601 East Longbow Parkway. Item 3E, Act on Liquor License Application for Maduro's Fine Cigars and Tobacco East, 1907 West Main Street. Item 3F, Act on Liquor License Application for First Watch, 1534 South Signal Butte Road. Item 3G, Act on Liquor License Application for Longbow Golf Club, 5601 East Longbow Parkway. Item 3H, Act on Liquor License Application for Outcast Donuts, 104 West Main Street. Item 3I, Act on Liquor License Application for Slaughterhouse What-the-Hell Bar, 7303 East Main Street. Item 4A has been removed from the agenda. Item 4B, approving contract to purchase stage lighting fixtures for the Mesa Art Center, Iquita, and Playhouse Theaters as requested by the Arts and Culture Department. Item 4C, approving one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for gas serve regulators for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4D, approving one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for pipe parts for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources and Water Resources Departments. Item 4E, approving use of a cooperative contract to purchase four crew trucks with utility service bodies for the Energy Resources and Water Resources Departments. Item 4F, approving use of a cooperative contract for an eight-month term contract with three years of renewal options for electrical motor drives and maintenance for the Water Resources Department. Item 4G, approving one-year term contract with one-year renewal options for income verification software for the Community Services Department. Item 4H, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for landscape irrigation and sprinkler supplies for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities and Transportation Departments. Item 3I, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for fence gate and safety rail repairs and installations for the Transportation Department. Item 4J, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for five master job order contracts for transportation and construction services. Item 4K, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for three master job order contracts for general building construction services. Item 4L, approving purchase of two gas delivery and breaching systems for additional armored vehicles for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by the Public Safety Sales Tax. Item 4M, approving use of a cooperative contract for the purchase of two replacement armored vehicles for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by the Public Safety Sales Tax. Item 4N, approving use of a cooperative contract for the purchase of evidence lockers and refrigerators for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4O, approving contract for Water Transfer Station Number 2 Upgrades Project, Construction Manager at Risk, Guaranteed Maximum Price Number 1. Item 4P, approving contract for Gateway Boulevard and Aviation Way Utility and Roadway Improvements, Construction Manager at Risk, Guaranteed Maximum Price Number 3. Item 5A is for continuance to the December 1st, 2022 council meeting. This is a resolution pertaining to canvassing, declaring, and adopting the results of the special bond election consolidated with the statewide general election held November 8th, 2022. Again, this is for continuance to the December 1st City Council Meeting. Items 5B through 5E are the approval of resolutions and authorizing city manager to enter into the following agreements. Item 5B, a project agreement, the Maricopa Association of Governments, for reimbursement under the arterial lifecycle program for the Ellsworth Road-Pasada Avenue to Prairie Avenue project. Item 5C, a development agreement for city share reimbursement with Shea Homes Limited Partnership for waterline improvements in conjunction with a proposed residential development at 10,303 East Williamsfield Road. Item 5D, a grant agreement with the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission to accept grant funds to be used for equipment for the Police Department's Forensic Services Division. Item 5E, an intergovernmental agreement with the participants in the regional metropolitan Phoenix Fire Service Automatic Aid System to provide automatic assistance for fires and other types of fire rescue emergency medical services. Item 5F, approving resolution endorsing creation of the Sherwood-Mesa Irrigation Water Delivery District, generally bound by University Drive in the north, Pepper Place in the south, Stapley in the west, and Hunt Drive. Fennel designation of the district is determined by the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance amending Title 6 of the Mesa City Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 12 entitled "Offensive, Excessive, and Prohibited Noises." Item 6B, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 22-263 for property generally located east of Higley Road and north of Baseline Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay, council use permit, and site plan review to allow for an industrial development. Item 6C, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 22-265 for property generally located east of Greenfield Road and south of Southern Avenue. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for multiple residence development. Item 6D, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 22-731 for property located south of McDowell Road and west of Greenfield Road. Rezone, site plan review, and special use permit to allow for an industrial development. Items 7A through 7L pertain to action on resolutions and introducing ordinances regarding the city-owned utility terms, rates, fees, and charges, and setting December 1st, 2022 as a public hearing date on these ordinances. Items 7A, B, C, and D are resolutions and ordinances pertaining to electric utility services. Items 7E and 7F pertain to natural gas utility services. Items 7G and 7H pertain to water utility services. Items 7I and 7J pertain to wastewater utility services, and items 7K and 7L pertain to solid waste utility services. Item 8A, approving ordinance amending Title 6 Police Regulations, Chapter 1, General Offenses of the Mesa City Code by adding a new Section 22 entitled "Interfering with a Police Officer." Item 8B, approving ordinance for zoning case 22-942 for property generally located east of Greenfield Road and south of Southern Avenue. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for multiple residence development. Item 8C, approving ordinance for zoning case 22-583 for property generally located west of Country Club Drive and north of Rio Salado Parkway. Site plan review to allow for multiple residence development. Item 8D, approving ordinance for zoning case 21-1271 for property generally located west of Country Club Drive on the south side of University Drive. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for multiple residence development. Item 8E, approving ordinance for zoning case 22-671 for property generally located north of Brown Road and the east side of Power Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for multiple residence development. Item 9 is for approval of ordinances relating to the proposed development Wentworth 80th. Item 9 is for approval of annexation case 22-608 for property north of Elliot Road and east of Sausman Road. And item 9B is for approval of ordinance for zoning case 22-607 for property generally located east of Sausman Road and north of Elliot Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review for an industrial development. Item 10, approving subdivision plat, the Hub at 202, for property located west of Sausman Road and north of the Warner Road alignment. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. I'll note that I've received requests to speak on a few items that were listed on the Consent Agenda. Those are Items 6A, 6B, 8A, and 8E. Ms. Mosley, have we received any other cards or any other requests to speak on items on the Consent Agenda?
No, Mayor, we have not.
All right, thank you. And I'll also note that item 4A was removed from the agenda. We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please vote. Thank you. All votes are unanimous in favor of adopting the Consent Agenda. The next item then on our agenda is Item 6A. Both Items 6A and 6B are notices of ordinances and setting a hearing for December 1st to vote on the merits of the ordinance. So the agenda item tonight is whether or not we set a hearing for December 1st to consider the merits of these proposals. Item 6A is amending the Mesa City Code by repealing and replacing the offensive, excessive, and prohibited noises, clarifying definitions with new provisions. We had a study session, a presentation on this in our study session prior to this meeting. We have a request to speak from Mr. David Snyder. Mr. Snyder, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward. Thank you for being here, Mr. Snyder. We're looking forward to hearing from you. Again, we're not voting on the merits of this proposal tonight.
That's fine.
But just wanted you to make sure you knew that. So please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm David Snyder. I live in Mesa. Kind of a weird thing. I don't want to seem like a crazy person, but recently I had animal control come to my house because of somebody making a complaint for prohibited noises for my rooster. Roosters are allowed in Mesa unless apparently somebody makes an anonymous complaint, and then you have to either remove the rooster, or they take the rooster, or you get cited for the rooster. I don't agree with punitive issues for stuff that's allowed to have. It seems like it's a natural noise, and if you're allowed to have them, then they should be allowed to make noise. I understand if it was excessive, if I had 10 roosters back there. So I think it should be fair that at least one rooster is exempted from those noise ordinances. And it seems like a ridiculous thing, but we have the Be Kind Initiative. I don't see him if he left for the invocation at the beginning of this meeting. But again, I felt like it's an important thing because I have a right to speak. Everybody, you here, everybody has a right to speak. The rooster should have a right to speak, too. Dogs can bark. They're not like a prohibited noise. If it's excessive, you know, obviously, somebody could come out and say, "Hey, you need to do something about your dog. Calm it down a little bit," right? So I'm also a non-denominational monotheist, but I consider myself a man of faith, and I felt compelled to come here to speak, partly because I was upset that I had to deal with this. But sometimes God puts stuff in your path for whatever reason, so you have to at least speak on it. Roosters are mentioned 14 times in the New Testament, at least that I know of. It's been a religious symbol for a lot of Christian faiths since the first Pope. As far as other religions, also even in Islam, from what I understand, I don't know that it's listed in the Quran, but you should not disparage the rooster because he calls everyone to morning prayers. And with everything going on in the world, also with food security issues, I just wanted to say my piece that if anything, people should be encouraged to at least have a few chickens in their backyard, because I kind of lost my train of thought there for a little bit. But if everybody had chickens in their backyard, those eggs would at least feed everybody. You know what I mean? It seems like a ridiculous thing, but there's religious reasons for having them. There's social reasons for having them. I don't think any city in the world's ever been founded without those founding citizens having chickens with them in their toe. Eggs for the bread, eggs for breakfast, it's a million different reasons. And so that's why we'd just like him excluded from prohibited noises.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. That's all the time you have. Thank you for coming out. And just again, so we're clear, we're not voting on the ordinance tonight.
No, no, I get you.
We're giving a notice out so the people like you can come to the meeting on December 1st and share their concerns about the ordinance. So I'm going to invite city staff to, at our next meeting, to address those concerns so that we can know to what extent the proposed ordinance might impact roosters in people's backyards.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Counsel, any other discussion on this item? All right, then is there a motion to approve Item 6A? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously, setting a hearing for December 1st to consider that ordinance. Next is Item 6B. Again, this is setting a hearing for December 1st to discuss a zoning case. This is located east of Higley Road and north of Baseline Road, rezoned from Planned Employment Park to a light industrial with planned area development overlay. This request will allow for an industrial development. We have a request to speak from Anna Makin. Ms. Makin, are you here? Thank you. Please come forward. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Anna Makin. My address is 3052 North Diego Street. I'm from up by Red Mountain neighborhood, and we have a lot of construction up there, too. So the traffic is pretty awful up there, and accidents have increased, and the air pollution has gone up, too. So I have my own pulmonologist now. I moved to the Falcon District 17 years ago, before it was a corridor. Now I see corridors all over town. We have the Elliot Corridor, the Gateway Corridor, and there is the luge of construction going on. So what have I got to do with the Baseline Logistics Park? I have been driving around the Alval in Cornfield for about five summers every day, and I have enjoyed the open space out there. And one day, a vulture was sitting on one of your rezoning boards, and it stopped me in my tracks. I looked up the plan, and I was shocked. If you have looked at the plan, there will be eight warehouses, including three mega buildings, 40-foot-high buildings, hundreds of loading docks, thousands of parking lots, all in one sweep in the middle of town. That's insane. I think you should think about it a little bit longer and maybe revise the plan. I suggest not to rezone the 55 acres for this plan. Many reasons speak against it. There are many commercial properties available. These could be filled up first. The location is an interior lot. It will create access problems and traffic congestion. The buildings are oversized, off-scale, and even dwarf the UPS facility. The citizens' participation, I have looked into the map. I was a little bit skippy. It skipped across the US 60, asking for participation in a place where it doesn't make sense because they couldn't care less about the other side of the 60. And I would say the environmental impact will be bad with this mass of concrete and asphalt. When I took a picture, the vulture talked to me and asked me, "Are you the one who wants to pour concrete all over the 55 acres of farmland?" I said, "Sorry, no, it's not me." But I was a little bit ashamed and worried for the vulture. So I asked the vulture, "That must be hard for you. What will you eat when all the birds and field mice are gone?" And the vulture laughed and said, "Oh, don't worry about me. Worry about yourselves." So, dear city council, listen to the vulture. There is too much concrete, asphalt, and construction going on. It needs to be moderated to leave room for the people, leave room for green space, leave room for meeting space, and just for all citizens to enjoy that.
Thank you, Ms. Makin. I let you finish because I was curious to know what the vulture said. So...
Okay.
Thank you. Again, this item is on our agenda. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make fun of you. That was a great story. Thank you for sharing that. We are voting tonight not on the merits of this zoning case. We are setting a hearing for December 1st. So I invite you to come back and address the merits of the case at that point as well. But tonight, we're voting on whether or not to have that hearing on the 1st of December. That being the case, I'm not necessarily going to ask the applicant to come forward and address the merits of the case either, because we're going to look forward to doing that on the 1st of December. All right, I see we have a motion for Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna, to set that hearing. All in favor, please cast your vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item 8A. There we go. Item 8A is taking action on an ordinance. This is by adding a new Section 22 to Chapter 1 of the Mesa City Code, interfering with a police officer, prohibiting the obstruction of a police officer from their official duties or refusing to obey a lawful order issued while engaging in the discharge of their official duties. We have three requests to speak. We'll hear first from Christopher Ruff. Mr. Ruff, you have three minutes.
Howdy, council. You guys know me as Christopher Ruff, but online I'm known as Direct D. I've put all of your faces on my internet channel, and I've done that because of why we're here today. You guys are trying to create an ordinance to protect police officers while you're about to spend $75,000 on an armored tank. I think that's enough protection for the police officers. You guys can't field any evidence to show that the police need any protection. There's already an ARS in Arizona that protects officers from being interrupted. It's ARS 13-2402, and it's obstructing governmental operations. It requires a physical element or a threat to incite public excitement or a threat of violence. And what you guys are proposing is extremely overbroad and frankly unconstitutional. It says to, "You will not disobey an unlawful order." Does anybody here even know what an unlawful order is? If a police officer walks up to me and says, "You need to back up", that's not a lawful order. If I'm standing out in public on a public forum on a sidewalk, I don't have to back up. You guys got to put tape up. But you know, we see you guys misusing tape to violate the First Amendment, too. And I say "you guys" because you're responsible for the police out on the street. I've been wandering around the streets of Mesa for two years filming the police officers. You know who's the only person that's been assaulted? Me. You know how many times I've been arrested at the hands of the Mesa Police Department? Countless times. I can't use both of my hands. I've got cases on appeal that you guys found, the Mesa Municipal Court found me guilty on arresting a police officer. I was arrested for all this stuff that you guys are trying to create this ordinance for. And they suspended my license for a traffic violation because I wouldn't obey an officer. Refusing to obey an officer is a Title 28 code, and that's what you guys are trying to replace here, is because you know you're going to lose on appeal. You understand what I'm saying, right? I was convicted of filming the police on a sidewalk, and the DMV called me and told me they're going to suspend my license for that when I wasn't in a vehicle. That's the level of genius that we have going on in the municipal court system. And it's funny that Mayor Giles can't even look me in the eyes as I'm talking, because you know I've made videos about you. You know exactly who I am. Westing back here knows exactly who I am, too. You guys love me. I made fools of so many of your cops, it's not even funny. And I'm going to continue to do it because obviously you guys... And I'm gonna continue to do it because obviously you guys don't understand. You're creating an ordinance to protect police officers from what? From cameras or from lawsuits? What are we protecting the police from? How many times have the police been hurt, assaulted, abused in the last two years? I've got thousands of videos on my YouTube channel. I have a hundred and thirty-five thousand subscribers because of your police officers. You're not controlling them and you ain't doing nothing to fix the problem. You're only compounding it by creating an ordinance that's no bueno. I hope you guys know what a Monell claim is? You're on note.
Thanks, Chris. Hey. Uh, next is Darren, uh, Darren Barrett. Welcome, Mr. Barrett. You have three minutes also.
Hello, I'm Darren Barrett. I'm a resident of Tempe. I shouldn't even have to be here in the first place as a resident of Tempe. But as someone like Chris, I filmed the police, I've been filming your guys' police department for five years. I've been doing this for so much longer, I don't have the, you know, the, the view power as he does, but your officers, they, they're putting up tape to feel safe. They're setting up tape to, to violate the First Amendment of people who are allowed to film the police. None of us have ever obstructed or interfered with your officers. I'm not, I'm up here, Giles. I'm up here.
Be respectful.
He needs to be respectful and look at me when I'm talking to him. Anyways, spending, you guys are looking to get two armored tanks. Just the other day, I was filming your officer, Deuce, and he set up tape to make him feel safe. My camera does nothing but kill, uh, kill careers. When you have an officer that's setting up tape and at a simple DUI stop and we're not interfering and the officer openly admits that the tape is not for the DUI stop, but it is indeed for the cameras and for me, that's, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen and I can't wait to file it. That's a notice and I can't wait to file it in City Hall. This code you guys are trying to bring in is unconstitutional. It, we are allowed to be close enough to see and hear what is being conducted during that investigation. You could watch our videos. We don't interfere. We don't obstruct. We may, once in the, uh, you know, once every now and then, advise people of their rights because the officers are not willing to do that. I appreciate you for keeping eye contact with me since Giles doesn't know how to do that. But I'm done here. Giles, get it together.
I'll do my best. Thank you.
Mayor, council members. My name's Scott Jacobs. My address is fifty-four hundred West Valley View Road. Um, this is a lot of first things for me, first time I'm going to a council meeting, the first time that I'm speaking at a council meeting. So I'm a little nervous, but that's okay. I don't film the police, but I did spend twenty-five-plus years as a medical professional. And I wanna say that you should all be ashamed of this police department. The beatings, the police brutality from twenty-sixteen until now, it's just ridiculous. And I think that the police deserve to be filmed. And I'm too nervous to speak, I'm too upset to speak. Look at him with his head down. Yeah, when's your, when's your, when do you, when do you get reelected? Shame on you all. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, you know, we've had a presentation on this, but, uh, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask, uh, the police, can, can we clarify, does the proposed ordinance prohibit videotaping of, of police officers? Maybe you can address that.
Mayor and council, I'll answer that way. It, it does not. In fact, it specifically has multiple places where it says that it's not prohibited. That's not what it does. And in fact, this ordinance is, is in Tempe, um, and Phoenix, Scottsdale, Chandler, Gilbert, Glendale, Goodyear, Peoria, Maricopa. We're one of the few communities that does not have this ordinance. And so we're simply doing what all our neighboring municipalities have already done, uh, many years ago.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, any discussion on this item? Is there a motion for approval? I think we need to bring up the, uh...
Let me reset it for you.
Okay, thank you.
I need a motion.
All right. Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please vote. Thank you. That item passes unanimously. Uh, next item is item 8E. Uh, this again is a, uh, zoning case with, on the, from the thirteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred blocks of North Power Road, rezoning from single residents to, uh, planned area of development. Uh, we do have, I have four requests to speak. Could we have, uh, Russell Bernzen come forward? Sir, do you wish to speak? I have, uh, Russell Bernzen, followed by Kevin Venenissick. I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Uh, then David Sloan, followed by Michelle Santos. So let's, let's go in that order and we'll begin with, uh, Mr. Bernzen.
Can I close this?
Yes, sir. Welcome, Mr. Bernzen.
Thank you.
I know you, looks like you've got a lot to say. Can you do it in three minutes?
Well, I've got a few things. This is my, this is my PowerPoint right here.
I love it.
A little, uh, non-techy, but, um, I'll, I'll address these in a, in a few minutes. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say something about, well, um, my name is Russell Bernzen. I live at sixty-nine oh eight East Hobart Street. I'm just, uh, north and east of the proposed Jackson Project, the case zone number twenty-two dash zero-zero-six-seven-one, item eight E. So, but first of all, I wanted to, you know, uh, do kudos to the kindness, uh, ordinance issue. It's just, uh, I'm a huge believer in that. Um, you know, you can make somebody's day or you can ruin their day, and I'm all for making somebody's day. So I'm gonna do my best to be kind. So first of all, there was a, there's a neighbor that couldn't be here tonight that wanted me to read something, so I'm gonna read that first. This is just a quote from him. "If you are convinced that multifamily residential is the proper zoning for this neighborhood, at least postpone the final decision until the neighbors have had the opportunity to meet with the actual developer, whomever that might be, to discuss our concerns with them directly. It is important that we have this meeting prior to any zoning change rather than at a future pad hearing where it will be too late to get our zoning back." Okay, so my comments. Um, first of all, Councilman Luna, I appreciate the quick response today. Assistant and Mr. Lake were kind enough to answer some of my questions that I sent out in an email earlier this morning. If any of you, and, and I think that's public record, but if any of you did not get that correspondence, I'm happy to answer any questions outside of my allotted time, um, and/or I can forward that email to you. I'm sure Mr. Lake can as well. "As you know, I'm opposed to the current zone change. I am not opposed to a residential development. I look forward to meeting new neighbors. I am just opposed to cramming sixty-one units into a space of roughly six acres. I would, however, like to congratulate Mr. Lake, the owners, and whomever else might be involved with this development. Um, they have done a great job of making it appear that sixty-one units can be constructed on this six acres, even though it is at the, uh, opposition of every neighbor within several blocks that I am aware of."
Mr. Bernzen, you're out of time. Can you kind of wrap it up and then, uh, we've got three other...
I've got, I've got a lot more to say. I, um...
Let me, and I, and I don't wanna cut you off, but let me just say this. Uh, take a, take a few minutes, or take a moment to, to be concise, to even wrap up what you have to say. And then after your other neighbors have spoken, if, if all of you feel like there's something that hasn't been said, I'll allow you to come back up and make another point. But I think between the four of you, you're probably gonna say a lot of the same things, I'm guessing.
I don't think, I don't think they're gonna talk about this one. The, the thing is, there were, uh, six or seven neighbors that allotted their time to me. Would you like me to give you those names?
We don't do that.
Okay. All right. Well, I've, I've got quite a bit. I'll try and wrap this up as quick as I can.
Hit the high points, and then at the end of, of the evening, if you haven't got to say, if somehow there's something still needs to be said, I'll invite you to come back up.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll jump right to the point of, uh, of the drawing. So I would like to, uh, pass these around so you can, you can see what, what I am, uh, addressing here. So this isn't, you know, I, I, this isn't an opinion that I'm trying to portray here. It's, it's actual facts. And I'll just, uh, I'll go through all of this, uh, right here. I've got a, a pointer. So if you look at, if you look at this drawing, you can jump over from the, um, well, let, let's look at the pictures first. So look at, look at these pictures. So the thing that I wanted to point out about this project that has not yet been addressed is the power. So this is Hobart, this is, uh, the project looking south from Hobart Street, and this shows the power going down, um, Power Road, which is, uh, hundreds of thousands of volts. This prop, this goes right through the property. And if you look at this drawing here, you can see that's what this is right here. That's the, the utility power that's going through the property. Right now, it's showing going right through unit number twenty-one. And as Mr. Lake responded to my question, of course, that can't go through this, they're gonna underground it. Well, my question is, and there's, you know, in your own, in Mesa, City of Mesa's own document, you go to the section in here, they, they, uh, encourage that the applicant do a technical review. I've asked this question, I've not had it answered, if that actually happened.
Mr. Bernzen, I, I've, I've read your email, I'm familiar with the questions, and so at this point, I'm gonna just tell you, your time is up.
Okay, well, let me just, I'll, I'll try and speed this up.
Well, you have about three sen, three sentences left.
Okay. So the power that is going to go right through here impacts all the neighbors to the east. This power that is going to be undergrounded impacts every neighbor to the east. Mr. Sloan will talk about his particular issue right here, but it's not something that you can just say, "Okay, we're just gonna underground this power." You just can't do that. And I understand, it's a big issue. There's four-hundred-and-fourteen-page requirement that SRP goes through of regulations to do that. And Mr. Lake said, "Well, they're gonna work with the city and we're gonna underground it along either that street or this street." Well, that's great, but how is that going to get back to these neighbors?
Mr. Bernzen, I'm gonna ask Mr. Lake that question. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
Next is Kevin Venessick. Welcome, Mr. Venessick. You have three minutes.
Thank you. An applicant for rezoning is supposed to work to address neighborhood concerns and attempt to compromise. Well, I don't really see that happening here. Some examples: access via Power Road to minimize impact on the neighborhood. This has been requested repeatedly. When Sean Lake finally understood this during the second, uh, neighborhood meeting, he said, and I quote from the minutes that his law firm provided from that meeting, "We will raise this request with the Mesa Transportation Department again, but we also don't think the distances between Hobart and Halifax will permit an additional Power Road driveway for safety concerns." And later, he states in the minutes that he provided, "I will send out another letter addressing the Power Road and Halifax entries, sightline views, and other changes we make to the proposal." He didn't do this. The letter did not address the Power Road entrance at all. Now later on, during the planning and zoning board meeting, when questioned by Board Member Peterson about this issue, Sean stated, and I'm quoting from the meeting minutes published by the city, "The city did not want an access off Power Road." That's from Sean. Now Sean is not the one who determines what the city wants. Of course, he didn't mean city, he meant city traffic. Well, here's what Ryan Hudson, City of Mesa Traffic Engineering, said in response in that same meeting, again quoted from the minutes. "It's not necessarily true that transportation would not support a driveway on Power Road between Hobart and Halifax, but that driveway would have to be a right-in and right-out access, period. What I see here is not that the city wouldn't allow this, but the applicant does not want to even attempt this compromise because it will reduce the density and therefore the profits." Now, of course, it's been portrayed all along that this level of density is needed because this lot has remained vacant all these years, because it's difficult, uh, to develop because of the size and the shape and things like that. But that's another twisting of the facts. In fact, the real story is that the entire portion of this property, which is probably about two-thirds of it, fronting Hobart Road, was owned by the church right there, basically land-banked until late twenty-nineteen, at which point the new owner was in the process of attempting to replat to accommodate four custom homes, so apparently that was profitable for him, till it was purchased at a higher price by this current developer. So to say that it's not feasible to develop at a lower density than presented is simply not accurate, and they don't want a lower density to accommodate neighborhood concerns. Another neighborhood concern is the use of stacked parking to achieve the number of parking spaces required for this type of development, which I don't understand why this has never really been addressed by the applicant or staff. I suspect the reason that this has really never been addressed because I don't think the city ordinance, uh, properly addresses with the use of stacked parking in situations like this, where you're gonna have underutilization of the parking, because people would rather park elsewhere rather than stack. So I'd suggest that the city should, city council should look at that ordinance. Finally, in the follow-on letter that I mentioned previously, the sightline illustrations, which were conveniently provided, had, uh, mature vegetation obscuring the second-story windows that were overlooking the neighborhood. Even worse, the sightline that they provide of, from the southeast neighbor to the two-story unit twelve conveniently crops out the view to units twenty and twenty-one, which are three-story and are due west of the neighborhood. So they just kind of brush that aside in a veil of compromise. "City council, speak for the people of City of Mesa and tell them to go back and truly try to work with the neighborhood. Explore the option of a Power Road entrance or exit for real, not just talk like you did. Don't use stacked parking to achieve the required number of parking spaces, and come up with a plan that transitions all the units abutting the existing neighborhood to a single story to kind of smooth out that transition. Then we can truly have something that is really a compromise amongst all interested parties while serving the needs and the desires of the city." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Venessick. Uh, David Sloan, followed by Michelle Santos.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, David Sloan, sixty-eight twenty-two East Halifax Drive. Uh, share a property line on two sides with the parceling question. I'm gonna just hit this quick and tight because it's already been a long night. The question here is, is to take land that's currently zoned for six homes and, and change that to allow more than sixty. So that's a big, that's a big jump. That's an order of magnitude by most people. Um, I wanna point out that this was a split decision for good reason in planning and zoning. Two people, you know, thought that also this was not a good idea. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna skip over points that have already been made. Uh, the land is useful without, right, you know, without this. It's not like this is the only way this land is gonna get developed. Uh, he, he made a really good point that this land's only been on the market for just a few years. And the two, the two people that owned the land briefly before it ended up in, in the hands of these guys that, uh, wanted to do much less dense, um, development and actually received pushback from planning and zoning on, I think, a density of twelve, uh, originally. So that's something that I got from listening to their, uh, their pre-submital meeting notes on the planning and zoning board. And then, you know, in speaking with the most immediate previous landowner, um, yep, he absolutely was planning on building four homes there. Uh, there are homes that have been built recently along Power Road and they sold. So people live there. Uh, it's, it's a fallacious argument to say that, "Oh, nobody's gonna buy that land to build a nice home." They will. Uh, that, and the developers, they knew what they were buying, right? It's, it's not our responsibility as the neighbors and your responsibility... and your responsibility as the board to make sure that they're satisfied with their purchase and that they're able to, you know, develop it or make as much money as they see fit. I think it's our responsibility to try to figure out something that works together. They're asking you to support their project. And I think by doing that, you're just, you will have to disregard the rights and the interests of the surrounding landowners. And I don't think that's right. RS-15 would be a reasonable request. That's a blend between the RS-9 that exists on the other side of Power and the RS-35 that otherwise completely encircles this land. And RS-9, I think, would be a bit of a stretch to match, you know, the zoning that's on the other side of Power. This is mid-block. But they want twice that, right? They want twice that density. So they're not looking for RS-9. They're not looking for RS-anything. They're looking for RM multifamily. And there's a difference. Based on all of that, please vote no. Let them come back with something that's more reasonable. I think that it's a great use of the land. I can completely support it. I could completely get behind it at a more appropriate density that meets in with the area. I would completely support RS-9, absolutely. I can't support RM-2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Michelle? Is Michelle Santos? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Michelle Santos. I live at 6802 East Indigo Street. And so I am just north of the proposed project. I completely agree, obviously, with everything that people have said with as far as the limited parking they're going to have and the amount of traffic that it's going to add and just the density that they're looking for. On Hobart and Halifax, which is a U, there's a total of 36 homes there right now. If you add Indigo, which is my street, it's basically those streets are our neighborhood. You add another 21 homes, which is 57 total homes across those three streets, which is our neighborhood. And you're wanting to add 61 units on a six-acre parcel of land in our neighborhood. And that's just too much. It's asking way too much for those of us who have been there for a very, very long time in that neighborhood on property to add that much density in our neighborhood. We're not okay with that. The zoning board, whenever this came to vote, nobody even wanted to make a motion on this because they knew that the neighborhood, the citizens of Mesa, do not want this there. They listened to us. They didn't want to make the motion. And their reasoning for passing it, those that passed it, said it's because there's nothing else that could go there. And that, to me, is completely unreasonable. Agreed. I wouldn't mind having a less amount there. Single-story, not three stories, where you're not putting that much traffic across those streets. And it's not just Hobart and Halifax that are going to be affected by the traffic. Indigo will too. People will drive right through that church parking lot onto Indigo to get both out to Power and the opposite direction since Indigo's not a dead-end street. And so I'm just asking you to listen to those in the neighborhood. We care. We're here because we care about our neighborhood. And we don't want that type of density in our neighborhood. That's it.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Santos. Mr. Lake, do you want to? I think there's been some issues raised here that you might want to respond to. So invite the applicant to tell us what you'd like us to know about the zoning case.
Mayor, council members, Sean Lake here on behalf of the property owners and developer of the site. I can either answer specific questions or go through the presentation, whatever is your preference.
You know, the neighbors took, you know, about three or four minutes times three or four people. So feel free to take, use the time as you'd like to.
Okay.
A similar amount of time if necessary.
I don't see anything pulling up on this laptop that was shut. So I'll just, rather than delay.
I think we're all very familiar with the layout.
I think we're all familiar with the project. And I'll just hit some highlighted points on this. The property is owned and will be developed by my client, David Darling. So they, to delay it so that we can meet further with my client, I think, would be a mistake. And so they'll be working on that. Obviously, they are not builders. That's not what they do for a living. So they will be hiring somebody to develop the property for them as most people do. And so that's maybe is their confusion there. But they will be moving forward with the project. As far as relocating and rerouting the electrical, there are existing 69-plus KV lines that run up and down Power Road north-south. Those won't be touched. Those are the big power poles. And those don't get undergrounded. SRP is, as they would say, is an overhead utility line provider. However, the City of Mesa ordinance does require all power lines less than 69 KV, or I think, less than 69 KV to be undergrounded when development occurs. Now, when the development, that subdivision was developed, that wasn't a requirement. But now, and for the last several decades, that has been a development requirement for all development, whether it's commercial, residential, any type of development. And that process works with SRP. During the construction plan permitting process, we, the property owners, or the property owners of any development in the valley, quite frankly, that is served by SRP, they work with SRP. SRP gives you the design of how they want the power lines to be undergrounded. We have accommodated those areas along the frontages of Hobart, Halifax, and Power to accommodate those underground lines. Once that design is come up with to meet SRP's standards, then SRP actually does the construction or the undergrounding of those utilities. That's their thing so that they can protect the interest of their own clients who receive power. And so all those under than 69 KV lines will be relocated on the site per SRP's design and per SRP's construction.
Mr. Lake, do you mind? Maybe I can steer you just a little bit. One of the things that I heard from these neighbors is that they're, they object to having a three-story apartment building backing up to their residential neighborhood. Can you talk about the design? How have you sought to mitigate the impact on this neighborhood of a three-story apartment?
Absolutely. I don't have the laptop. But let me just, for those that can picture the site, on the north or on the west side of the site where we are adjacent to a residential home on that side, we have single-story homes. Our homes will be single-story. Then adjacent to all the residential on our south and on our east side, we will have two-story townhomes. The three-story that they're referring are all pulled out to Power Road and been pushed up against Power Road. So there'll be a transition of height. As you get closer to the residential, it's single-story, two-story, and then three-story. There are no three-story adjacent to residential units. As far as access.
We're just trying to get here.
Oh, I didn't know who that was. I was like, whoa. As far as access off of Power, for as long as I can remember, I have always been trained by City of Mesa Traffic Engineers that they like to see developments go from a neighborhood to a collector to an arterial. And that's how we designed this project. The main entrance into this project is directly off across from the main entrance to the church on the north of the project. I think this might work. So let me scroll down.
It's coming up on our monitors now.
Sorry for the technical difficulties here. Let's do that one. So you can see on the top of the screen, which would be on our east side, those are all single-story homes that would be adjacent to that residential. Along the south side, or this side, we have, those are two-story that side onto the residential. So we don't have any patios or porches or balconies overlooking anybody. We sided those units onto there along our south side. Can you see my cursor scrolling?
No.
Nope. Okay. And then along the, if you can see along the, what would be the flagpole size? If this becomes a flag with a pole, on the top side of the flagpole, we have landscaping and open space and setback. And those units are all two-story. The only three-story are off in the corner adjacent to the church and Power Road. As far as access, I, we designed it so that we have access from the community off of Hobart, which is directly across from the church's main entrance so that there wouldn't be our entrance across from a residential neighborhood. It would be directly onto a Collector Road-Hobart that would be across from the church. And then they would go to Hobart and then straight to Power. Same with Halifax on that location so that we have multiple points of ingress and egress for safety reasons, obviously, into this community. Let's see. Staff recommended approval of this project. Planning and zoning board recommended approval of this project. I'd be happy to go through any more details that you want. But we think this is a good, reasonable land use of this property. We think this will fit the area adjacent to Power Road, which is a very, very busy road. It's either one or two busiest road in the City of Mesa. We think this is a good project and will provide housing available for people who want to live and work in Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. We'll open it up for council discussion. Before we do that, though, I just want to note that we did have several cards that were submitted but asked not to speak. But these are, again, our neighbors that oppose the project, including Patricia Vinesic, Philip Rodriguez, Catherine Rodriguez, Craig Bossler, Roger Jenkins, and Karen Jenkins. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Thank you.
Counsel, discussion on this item. We'll begin with Mr. Luna.
Maybe Rachel or Sean. What about the parking issue, the stacking? Is that going to be problematic? Maybe, why don't we start with Rachel and then you?
Okay. So for the titanium parking that is permissible per the zoning ordinance, we don't foresee any sort of issues with that. We have multiple developments that are coming in or using that standard. So you would be the two parking spaces for that unit. You would have one inside the garage and then one directly outside in the, in a driving, driveway area.
And then the issue as far as the exiting the property, I know somebody raised concern about that. They wanted three entrances as opposed to two. Is that, is that correct? Or how are we going to work that out?
I guess I'm not following that. As far as the access into the project, the north side has two, one off of Hobart, one off of Halifax. Again, this is a gated community. And in the south side, the small piece on the bottom of the flagpole, if you will, the ingress and egress is off of Halifax. The other access off of Power will be an emergency and solid waste access only. That way, we don't have residences going north on Power, stopping short to pull in where somebody coming behind them might think they're going to turn on Halifax and they stop short and cause an accident. So we turn that access point on Power Road for the south side into a solid waste and emergency access only in this gated community.
Obviously, we've heard a lot about density. How, in terms of, have you worked with the neighbors? And did you have neighborhood meetings? How did that happen?
We, thank you, Councilmember Luna, Mayor Councilmember Luna. We've had two neighborhood meetings on this project. We've had other communication with neighbors and spoke with them about this project specifically outside of those two neighborhood meetings, both by in-person and email communication and phone calls. And as far as the density, we think this is a very good, reasonable density for this. We've gone up and down Power Road and looked at, where is RM-2? Where is RM-2 located? And we find, I think we found 13 or 15 locations up, just up and down Power Road where RM-2 was a good transition between RS-9, RS-15, RS-35 and a major, and Power Road, a major arterial. It was kind of a good buffer. Other locations have commercial or retail as the buffer between Power Road and residential areas. So we think this is a good transition. We've tried to pull the residential as far away from the neighbors as we possibly could. We have deviations to accommodate that. As you can see, we've lined everything up along Power Road and pulled it close to Power Road and have large landscape tracks all along where the residential is.
Thank you. Ms. Pillsbury.
So on the map where it says 19, so that's on Halifax, the, that's where the entrance to that property to the south is, correct? Is that the entrance I'm looking at?
So the, you're talking just about the south portion?
Well, so I'm just wondering what the 19s, I mean, when I can, I can look at the key and it says decorative textured pavement. But I'm just for, as far as like orientation there.
So if you look at Halifax, where it says Halifax, on the right-hand side, that would be the entrance and exit point for those nine units.
Right. And so the one that shows on Power is just for emergency and for trash.
Correct.
And then, so to the north of Halifax, is that also like an emergency trash exit?
That would be, no, that's an ingress and egress point for, or entrance and exit for residents.
Oh, for residents.
But gated. Usually clicker operated.
They just have a clicker or something. So guests would have to go off of Hobart.
Correct.
But anyone living there could enter on and off of Halifax.
Correct. I think, actually, I think, I stand corrected.
Okay.
That is an exit only on Halifax. So the entrance would only be off of Hobart across from the church main entrance.
So you'd have to go in through the same place that any visitors would go in and then enter one of those gates to get into the rest of the property.
Correct.
Okay. My second question was that several of the emails we got just inferred that there wasn't a lot of community involvement and neighborhood meetings. And, I mean, you've addressed that. But I guess, I guess maybe I'm wondering what the neighbors, if they're feeling like you need more meetings or they just want to be heard because they don't feel like they're being heard. Or, I mean, how, how do you guys feel about that?
We've had two neighborhood meetings and multiple communications, like I indicated, via email and telephone conference. We have reached out and worked with the neighbors. I think the challenge here is we disagree on some points. And there's some things that we haven't been able to change or not willing to change. And there's points that they haven't or unwilling to change as well. And at some point, you come to a point where if two parties aren't agreeing on something, we can continue to get together and talk about it. But I think we've reached an impasse. And that's kind of, I think, where we're at with several of those points, where we've reached an impasse where we can't make those changes and the neighbors want us to make those changes. So we're agreeing to disagree and moving forward. And so that's, I believe, why we went to planning commission on that.
Okay. I would just like to make the comment. I've been in this neighborhood. I've driven around it several times. Beautiful homes, huge lots. You guys have been there forever. forever, and I appreciate not wanting to, to see something at this density or anything, really, to come in over your fence. So I just, I do want to acknowledge that I appreciate the lowering of the stories, that there's only single level anywhere near residential. I did hear the comment that there's windows, so I, I believe there are windows, there's no balconies, correct?
Correct.
So, but there would be maybe some, are they bathroom windows, bedroom windows facing the residential?
On the east side, on the top, those are single-story, so you wouldn't really have any issues there because you would have not only the setback and the single-story, but the landscaping.
So those two-story ones that back Mr. Sloan's property, I believe.
The two-story are, that, on the back of Mr. Sloan's property, those side on to that area. And so we not only have the landscape area that's wider than the code provides with more landscaping, but we also don't have patios or balconies that overlook in that area because we've sided the units on. There might be some windows, but we can obscure those with oversized landscaping.
Okay, so that's a, there, are they bedroom windows probably, though? Or is it like a high-up bathroom window? I'm just wondering what kind of window.
I believe they're, I might guess, it would be up to what, I'd have to look at the internal footprint of that, but probably either a bedroom or a bathroom window.
And those are two-story, correct?
Those would be two-story.
Okay. So I, I mean, I appreciate the landscape buffers, I appreciate that all along Mr. Sloan's property and across Halifax, that there are no buildings up there closer to where his house, where the, both of those houses are, and those landscape buffers. So, I mean, I do appreciate the ways in which you've tried, even though the neighbors are not happy with this, and I can totally understand that, I appreciate the changes that have been made to try, try to ease some of that, so.
Thank you.
That's all for right now.
Thank you. Counsel, other discussion on this item. Vice Mayor.
I will make one point of, you know, the, the conversation, anyway, let's, I'll, I'll keep it to this. I've lived in this area previously, I live in downtown Mesa, of course, right now, but I've lived in Alta Mesa, Red Mountain, Los Angeles. Now, I know those are master planned communities, but the point is, in those master planned communities, they had sections of the master plan that included townhouses and, and townhouses and condos, and then there would be mid-level homes and custom homes, and they were all surrounding that. So with proper landscaping and separation and, you know, the entrance and stuff like that, it does work in character and it allows housing options for you to live in your neighborhood. I know this neighborhood has big, beautiful homes, but if there was a point that you needed to downsize or couldn't keep up with the large property, you would be able to be in your neighborhood or have your grandparents or your kids living there. So creating community with homes at all different aspects, I think, is, is needed in our community to have all custom homes in one corner and apartments over there, and everything is not how we lead our lives. I've lived in apartments, I've lived in townhomes, I've lived in mid-size homes, I've lived in custom homes, I've lived at all levels, and I think that's the reality of our lives. So the density is only providing more options, and even in our master planned communities with great planning, we, you can respect the, the surrounding properties. And so I just want to put that out there because I know this conversation is again and again, and I think this is a good quality pro, um, project that does respect the neighbors. I realize it's not the same density, but having custom homes along Power Road will never happen. So, thank you.
Mr. Luna.
First of all, I want to thank the residents. I, I think we're good, Sean.
Thank you, also.
So I want to thank the residents for getting involved. I know this is a tough issue. We've been, I've been on city council for nine and a half years, going on 10, and I think this is like the fifth project. We were looking at office, we looked at putting cargo containers there. Many of you remember the mini-storage, that was controversial, the residents didn't want that. And then most recently, the food trucks. That was a very controversial development where the residents and, you know, my colleagues in council agreed that that was inappropriate. To me, this project would be appropriate. I think that they've done a real good job. I know that change isn't always something that we want, but change does have to happen. If we don't do something like this, then I don't know what else we can do. I like the project. I think it's going to fare well with the residents. I know, obviously, there's going to be more people living there, there's going to be obviously more traffic, but our streets can accommodate traffic. They can do all the things that this development's going to do. So I'm going to be in support of this development and, and I will, I will be voting on it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll, I'll just echo some of the things that have already been said. I haven't been on the council for nine and a half, but I have for eight, and I, so I've been a party to all of the various proposals that have come across the desk for this property, and I know that change is difficult, that we are transitioning large acre custom homes out to Power Road, which is one of the busiest streets in, in our, in our city. And so how, there, there's going to be probably some disagreement and some, some hand wringing over what the appropriate transition is from that intense traffic street into what is a quiet, beautiful, custom neighborhood. And I, I think this project does a, a pretty good job of doing that. If you, if you really get in and scrutinize the project, the, the buffering that's in, the way that the, the elevations of the home are oriented in order to mitigate against the impact on the, the neighborhood to the east is, is, the intention behind the, the design is very evident. So I'm going to support the case as well. And I, I think that, I, I personally believe the neighbors' concerns are ultimately, you won't, this won't be as bad as you imagine. But, but this property has been problematic for the last nine or 10 years, and I think this is as good as we're going to do. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is items from citizens present, item 11. We have one request to speak. Mr. Peter Kovacs. Mr. Kovacs, welcome. You have three minutes.
Ready to roll. Okay, we're on the clock. Hi, I'm Peter B. Kovacs. I own four companies, Vehiculous, Lantornacional, and three online media companies. On Jul, at your July 20, 2018 meeting, if I remember, Mark was chairing it and Francisco was here, and I was not allowed to talk on my US Senate campaign. I'm not going to tonight. John, I want to compliment you for crossing party lines in the last US Senate election. Quickly, I'm going to run through this. I, I've been shut out on the ballot 2016, 2018, 2020, and 2022. I ran against Cory Booker in New Jersey, but pulled out because my mother died. Quickly to recap what happened, I'm still fighting Habe County where I tried to save my trail and it was taken from me unscrupulously in March of 2018. I'm still in litigation with the county on two other minor issues. David was not at the meeting either. Yeah, you weren't there either. I don't recall if Kevin was there, but I remember I said that I complimented you on running your reelection campaign, I think it was in 2018. Briefly, because I've got, coming up on about one more minute, the one thing I want to say right now is that I challenged the signature law. I sued the state of Arizona based on the signature law. It's 800 signatures in New Jersey. I lived there for 19 years and I was on my way to the ballot when my mother, who was a Westfield, New Jersey, schoolteacher, passed away in 2014 in April. My dad died in Florida in 2004 December. I'm a dual citizen with Hungary, born in Pennsylvania. Basically, on this particular cycle, I know I'm probably going to need 37,000 signatures to get on the ballot because I have conflicting information. I did not execute the lawsuit against Brinovich in the state of Arizona, and I don't think I would have been able to have won that particular lawsuit. But I did it on principle because of the fact that there's this discrepancy in the signature laws from state to state. I checked five states that I know I can get on the ballot for, for president. Arizona, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Idaho, all I have to do is petition the Secretary of State and I'm on the ballot. And the fifth state where I could pay $10,000 to get on the ballot is Colorado and Washington, DC, which I have to double-check. Now, I'm not going to run for president because an independent can't win. Not even Angus King, who I contacted, who was the only true US Senate independent, and he's from Maine. Bernie Sanders is basically a socialist who is a declared independent. Okay, that's the political lecture. I want to thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to wrap it up quickly with about 15 seconds to go. Thank you. God bless you. Graduate of Fordham, and Andrew Cuomo was in my graduating class. By the way, he doesn't talk to me and you know who he is. Kathy Hochul won the race there because she was the lieutenant governor. And we know what happens here. Congratulations to Katie Hobbs. Congratulations to all of you for being great elected officials. Have a good night. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Kovacs. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.